Hello.
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 Hey, we have quite a few people that are calling.
All right.
Deb Rushden.
Just do the roll call.
Well, it's 6:59, so if you want to just give it three seconds.
All right.
Um, I'm, thank you, everybody's muted. Do you want to let them know who's present, they're going to be muted?
Everyone is muted, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I'm gonna... The people that called in with a phone. Can I mute them, or...
Yeah.
They're not going to be able to hear anything, though.
Yeah, you don't want to mute them, right?
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, call the meeting to order, we'll all do the pledge of allegiance, and then a moment of silence, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So now we have the roll call.
Commissioner Ann Sorgi.
Here.
Commissioner Rushden.
Present.
Chairman Bannon.
Here.
Commissioner Wessel.
Here.
Commissioner Sudaslow.
Here.
Commissioner Rattenbach.
Here.
Commissioner Laughtner.
Present.
All present.
Thank you very much. So, do we have any communications? No, we'll go with that. There's no communication, so then we have approval of four minutes. And we have, at least, we've got eight listed here, I'm thinking probably the first six.
I can hardly...
Yes, Commissioner...
I can hardly hear you, and I don't know why.
So, is that better, if I move it up closer?
I don't know how much closer I can get at.
No, I'm talking about myself, you're not hearing me, is that what it is?
I can hear you better now.
Okay, well, that's, I'll just speak closer to the microphone, that's why I moved it up.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Sudaslow.
I was just going to say, with, I went through all of the minutes, of course, but the April 14th is the only one I'd like to postpone to the next.
Yes, yeah, I was looking at the first six, you know, the... Do you want to make a motion to accept the first six of them?
I would, I would like to make a motion to accept the first six minutes as presented, sets of minutes.
Yes. Sir, Commissioner Rattenbach. Yes, so you seconded, okay. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please, raise, what we'll do is, we'll raise our hands when we vote, so that I, we can tell who's voting and who's not. So that motion then passes 7-0. So we are going to skip then the seven and eight, April 14th executive session, and the special session. So then that would, that would then bring us...
I didn't join with video.
That's okay.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Ann Sorgi, did you... Said, no?
I'm good.
Someone said something, but... All right, so then that would bring us then to approval of the agenda. We do have one late addition that has been requested, but then it was also requested to be removed. So, all I would be asked is that we move the planning.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Wessel.
I, I can't hear anything, could we see if Ron can make an adjustment? I, I have heard very little of anything tonight.
Should I bring this closer to me than Ron, or?
Is there a volume control?
It's, it's cutting in and out, it's not that it's low volume, it's cutting in and out.
Okay, well, thank you for that information, we've moved it closer, does that help at all? Commissioner Wessel. Okay. I'm, I'm trying to, to speak, and we've moved the microphone around, is this sounding better to you, Commissioner Wessel? No. What? Yeah, he's going, Ron is going to go check on something, and we'll see if we can get it in better.
Okay, otherwise... Oh. Here.
Yeah, so you just cut out, and we didn't hear really what you said.
I was, I was suggesting that if, if, if I can't hear, I'd rather connect by phone to make sure I hear.
Let's just see what Ron... Okay, well, Ron's going to try it, and we'll see what he says.
Thank you.
If somebody who can't hear is just fine, so it must be on your end, Mr. Wessel.
I'll try it.
So there, yeah, they're, they're, they're saying that it must be on your end, because they, Ron's called different people, and they're, they're actually hearing it fine.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any, is there anyone else who's not hearing the, yet, very well? No, so, so maybe you want to call in on phone? Commissioner Wessel, would you want to call in on the phone? Not hearing me, is he?
Yes, well.
Yeah, I'm wondering if you want to call in on the phone, so you can hear. No. No, he doesn't hear me at all.
Yeah, his video is choppy, so he's, he's going in and out.
Anyone else here?
Yeah, everybody else, everybody else has said that. Yeah, they, everybody else, he, I'm going to, should I call on my phone, or?
I'll, I'll call.
Okay. We're, we're trying to get communication with Commissioner Wessel, his is not, his audio's not coming through.
Yes, Chair.
You want to dial in and just try audio, see if that helps you?
I think so, if that's okay with the Chair.
Yes, that's fine.
What's the number?
Can you tell them?
It's on the top of the agenda.
Yeah, you guys have the agenda?
Well, I don't know if they have it in front of them, so we'll talk.
That's not it?
Yeah, it could be, but if you can't hear you.
Yeah.
You said that wrong.
Oh, I'm, it's the, the 9541?
Well, here.
I said it wrong? Sorry.
Here's the phone number, are you ready?
Yes.
Yeah.
He said it.
I'm saying meeting number, he's got to enter the meeting number.
That's that 954.
Welcome to the, your meeting ID, followed by a pound.
Well, I gave him the meeting number, ID number, I'm sorry, I thought he had it.
You gave him the phone number. I didn't just send him the picture.
Next, please re-enter. President ID, followed by pound. You are in the meeting now, there are more...
Okay, you're all set, then?
This meeting is being recorded.
So...
You...
You cannot listen or talk until the host releases...
We're now going to look at the approval of the agenda. I would like to move the planning, planning commission vacancy to the top of the order. If that's all right, and otherwise, and no late addition.
I'm on hold, it says.
Okay, Commissioner Laughtner.
Yes, thank you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, you want to... Planning Commission vacancy number four up to number one?
Yes.
Okay, I object.
Okay, I am on now, thank you.
With, with item number five, it, I request this be discussion only?
Okay, well, I wasn't going to add number five on, did you?
Are you taking that off, or is it?
It's not on, it's, it is a late addition, that's why it's in red, and if we don't, if we do our agenda, then that's not included.
I see, okay.
So, so we, it's, there would be no number five, and then there would also, and what we would do is move number four up to number one, that's...
Okay, I think I...
I move to accept the agenda as amended.
Support.
Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand.
Question, Mr. Chair.
Okay, go ahead. Commissioner Wessel.
By Tony's, by Tony's amendment, and the, the motion we made, I'm assuming that is with the number five on there, as a discussion item only.
No, that was, we, I said that it's not included, if we do not amend that. I had made a statement that it, that was not included.
Well, I'm, I'm feeling at a loss here, because I missed that discussion, but I think I met, met the deadline to put that on, I'm not asking for any action, but I have had enough calls that I believe that we need that on there as a discussion item, so I would withdraw my second.
Okay, Commissioner Rushden.
I'll support the approval of the agenda.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Commissioner Ann Sorgi.
Well, if Commissioner Wessel asks for this to be on the agenda, don't we have the obligation to have it on the agenda?
No, the, the agenda is set...
Isn't it his right? I, I thought it was his right to ask for something to be added to the agenda.
He can ask.
He, he can ask, yes, but it, but it has to be as a late addition, because the, the agenda is set last Tuesday. So, I, I was informed that it was going to be removed by Commissioner Wessel, so that's why we presented it that way, and that's why the motion was made that way. But now, it sounds like he's reassessing it, but we've already have a motion and a second.
That, Mr. Chair, that is, I am not reassessing it, I don't want action, but I do want that item on the agenda, I think we, I, we, we, we need that on there for discussion and closure.
Okay, Commissioner Rushden.
Um, I personally don't see the purpose of this, we have no jurisdiction over the sheriff or the sheriff's actions. I believe that this issue is something that should be resolved through the sheriff, and the citizens that elected him, or the citizens of the community, this is not an issue for the Board of Commissioners, quite frankly, to be involved with, we all have our own personal opinions in regards to the activity that's gone on for the last two weeks, but this is not an issue that the Board of Commissioners needs to, uh, reign over.
Commissioner Ann Sorgi.
Well, when I made the motion, it was my understanding that the Commissioner Wessel did not want it on the agenda. If he still wants it on the agenda, then I, I would move to withdraw my motion.
Is, is that okay with the second?
No.
Okay, so we will, we will vote on it, then, and, and if it goes through, then it won't be on the agenda, if it fails, then we will reassess the agenda. So, again, I'd ask you to raise your hands, we'd have, so all those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, all those opposed, please raise your hand. Okay, the motion fails four to three. So, so now we would need to have a, a different motion for an agenda.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move to approve the, I move to approve the agenda as originally presented with item number five for discussion only.
Okay, would you be willing to move number four up to number one?
Yes.
Would that be all right with your motion?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Do we have a, a second for that? Please raise your hand, yes, Commissioner Rattenbach.
Tell me a second, okay.
I, I'm sorry, Commissioner Laughtner, did, did you say some, did you want to say something?
I thought Tony seconded earlier, but that's okay, as long as you have a...
Okay, all right. So, all, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, all those opposed, please raise your hand. The motion passes six to one. We now have an agenda, yes.
Thank you.
So, all right, so in this case, then, we would talk with Mr. Black concerning the planning commission vacancy. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we have to have public comment first, I skipped that, I missed it. Go ahead. Okay. So the first person would be Kathy Dawkins?
Kathy?
Kathy, are you there?
Yes, I'm sorry, we had some technical difficulties on our end. Okay. Good evening, my name is Kathy Dawkins. Our sheriff's press release of April 15th is disturbing. As a former law enforcement officer who believes strongly in the spirit of the law, I know that there is always a chain of command. Sheriff Borkovich's chain goes to the top law enforcement official, Michigan Attorney General Dana Nesso. When he has a problem with a law or executive order, he needs to go to the AG, not do a press release. I am a Michigan citizen, and I am not confused by our governor's emergency laws. What I am confused by is our sheriff's statement. He says he is not going to have strict enforcement of these orders. He does not tell us what orders he is or isn't going to obey. By doing so, he violates our trust in the process of the law and introduces chaos. Borkovich states he took an oath to uphold and defend the Michigan Constitution. That Constitution gives authority to our governor to execute executive orders. Our sheriff is violating his oath when he refuses to uphold our governor's executive orders. M. Coldz has the responsibility of ensuring that all law enforcement officers, including our sheriff, uphold their oath. I am requesting that our county contact M. Coldz regarding Borkovich's public statement of his refusal to abide by his oath. Borkovich made a comment to the Glen Arbor Con, "You being out in the outdoors will get rid of this virus quicker than anything. These viruses actually pop up in November." Every time I read this, I shake my head in despair, because it is quite apparent that he knows nothing about COVID-19. I have contacted Sheriff Borkovich twice by email, and once on his Facebook page, and asked him the same two questions. Have your concerns been communicated to the Michigan Attorney General's office? And, as your press release is vague and confusing to me, I am asking for clarification and specific examples of what portion of what executive order was vague to you. He has never responded to either of those questions. Here are parts of his response from his first email to me. "Your perception of what is happening is way off-base in terms of how we are handling the complaints that we are receiving, and rumors are vile, and I would hope that you feel the same way about things you do not understand." On top of his using a form letter to respond to me, I was insulted by those responses. His response on Facebook is no better, he keeps sidestepping issues. Instead of apologizing, he uses excuses as if he were still in sixth grade. Because of his recent conduct, I question his ability to responsibly do his job. I have been abiding by Governor Whitner's executive orders. What good is it to do so when our sheriff comes out and encourages others to disregard her orders? Another constituent of this county put it this way, "The job of a sheriff is to enforce the law, the job of Congress is to write the law, the job of the court is to determine if the law is constitutional. By taking this stand, our sheriffs have taken it on themselves to do the job of our Congress and court system. This is not okay." Thank you for allowing me to make my public comment.
Thank you. Do you have a second one lined up?
I only have, I have several that are on, but I only have one that said they were going to be called.
Okay. So is that, would the, the next one then be the Deborah Blodgett, or?
You can ask her if she wants to...
Yes.
She signed up, Laurel.
Debra, did you, Deborah Blodgett, did you want to comment at this time?
Well, I, I just wanted clarification, because I felt the same way that the commissioner who spoke earlier about the board doesn't have jurisdiction over Borkovich. We get clarification on that?
Well, this is public comment.
Yeah, this is public comment, it's not a, a question and answer time. We will have, we will discuss that at number five.
Okay, then I want to listen to number five, thank you.
Okay. So there's no other...
If nobody else wants to talk right now, then...
All right. Yes, and then I, I also have 13 different emails that were for public comment, there are several letters, and I, I thought those will all be put into, with the, the minutes, as, as part of public comment. Is there any questions about that, or is there any problem with that?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Rattenbach.
I had a question, I, I want to make sure that the letters are included in the minutes in full, that we have, not just that there were, who they were from, but that the contract...
Okay, did, did you want Michelle to answer that? Because we can, I'm sure she will include them in full, I can't imagine, plus the emails are, that are requested as well.
Okay.
Okay, Commissioner Wessel?
That was, I'm, I'm fine with that, I, the people that had called me asked about public comment, and I did say if they sent letters, that would be public comment. So I would hope that they would be provided in full in the minutes.
Okay, and do you have any problem with that, Michelle?
Do you want them in the body of the minutes, or just as an attachment?
Just as an attachment.
An attachment link, where they can say, click on the link, is that going to satisfy everyone?
Is that, if they're, they're a part of the, yes, okay, we're getting many nods of yes.
Yeah, I'll do that.
Okay, so then that would, that would close public comment. So then that brings us to our action items, and the first one would be, Mr., the planning commission vacancy. So, Mr. Black is here. And Commissioner Wessel, did you, you want to say anything about this?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Black, for joining us.
Yes.
Thank you for joining us, Mr. Black, and, and I, I asked that you come to the commission meeting, because I thought that it was important that commissioners got to meet you before we made an appointment. We have seen your, we have seen your resume and, and your experience, and it sounds like we're fortunate to have you be interested in the planning commission, but I did think that we ought to meet you and, and take action after we knew you. I do have one question. We, one of the, one of the roles in the, of the planning commission is to provide the general plan for the county every five years, or an update to the general plan. And the commission always looks at that and reviews it, and takes, takes pride in the work of the planning commission. We don't agree always on whether or not the Board of Commissioners should review and accept, or review and approve. And I wondered if you had an opinion on that? If you are a planning commission member, and the planning commission provides a five-year plan, would you hope that that'd be adopted as the general plan for the county, or received and filed?
Well, there's an awful lot that I'm going to need to learn. To answer that question's a little bit difficult for me, because of the, my experience with planning boards to this point has been on the end of, a deal in real estate, and I did get involved down in Muskegon County with the planning boards of various townships. Other than that, I would have to think that if the planning board has met and done their homework, they should know more about it than anybody else, and I would hope that the, the board would accept it and put it on file, at least. And, and that it should become a, a pattern to work from. That doesn't mean it's, it's set in stone, because there may be some revisions that need to be made, but with a lot of work going into it, yes, I would hope that it would be adopted.
Thank you.
Any other questions for him? Comis, Commissioner Sudaslow.
Good evening, Mr. Black, and thank you for joining us, and, and for applying, and welcome to Leona County as a year-round resident now. I understand you've been here since September, so you've got a good half year under your belt, and we hope you...
Yes, a gorgeous township and county.
Indeed, it is, and I read in your application that you had 12 years' experience serving on the road commission, part of that time as the chair, and during that time, you worked with various law enforcement entities, and were also serving on the criminal advisory board. So I had just two questions, what, just curiosity, what was it that appealed to you in terms of your planning committee? It's a little bit different from your path, although you have excellent experience, and I'm glad to see it in, in County government. And then the other question was, how do you think your previous experience will serve you as a planning commission member?
Well, for one thing, I hope that, I've got a lot to learn, there's no doubt. I did take the time to read the minutes of the board meetings of the commission for the past year, I, I brought them up and read all those. Found it very interesting, especially a couple of the more controversial issues, and it appears that the board works well together. I, I've got a lot to learn, I really, I'm going to have to listen more than speak, so that I can learn. And I'll ask a lot of questions, and hopefully become informed as to the direction that the county wants to go. My firm belief is that whatever I vote in favor of is going to be to the best interest of the public, and the best way of spending the taxpayer's dollar. I think that's very critical.
Thank you. Any, any other, Commissioner Rushden? I think you're muted.
Yes, I can't hear her.
Right.
I don't know why.
Okay, you're fine now, I hear you now.
Can you hear me? Okay.
Yeah.
I wanted to thank Mr. Black for stepping up and serving as a citizen on one of our boards. And it's not an easy job, it takes a lot of time, it takes a lot of study, and it, it takes a while to get a feel for what you are responsible for, so it's no easy task, and I just wanted to say thank you.
You're very welcome. I don't expect you'll always make friends in doing this job. I mean, you hope... I mean, you hope, not always.
That may be true.
Commissioner Ansorgi.
I move to appoint Mel Black to fill a vacancy on the planning commission, legal real estate category, to fill a partial term expiring December 31st, 2021.
Second.
Support.
Okay, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? The motion passes seven zero.
Thank you.
I'm, thank you very much.
Thank you, Matt.
Were there any other comments?
All right.
No, all right. Thanks very much. Then now we'll move on then to the COVID-19 update.
Yeah, and I've asked Matt Ansorgi to join us to give us an update on the events in the past week. Matt?
Well, hello. I did give a.
All right, so, so we'll begin again. I'm sorry about that interruption.
Ty has called in.
It's going to take like 15, 20 seconds.
Okay, Ty has to call in, so we are waiting just a minute till he gets hooked up.
Are we in now?
Yeah, everyone but you.
Well, I'm in and I'm not muted.
No, we can hear you. We can see and hear you, Ty.
Okay, so, so we'll, we'll begin again actually and Mr. Ansorgi was, was on, giving us an update. Could you continue, please, Matt?
Okay, part two. All right, so Monday, March 16th was the first, first day that we had a, a case of coronavirus in, in Leona County. Since then, we've been as high as eight cases and right now we are sitting at seven cases that are confirmed in Leona County. Shortly thereafter, the governor and the president declared emergencies for the coronavirus and we started to make resource requests in order to serve the best interests of our first responders and long-term care facilities in the, in the county. We experienced some challenges with logistics. We found that it was easier to handle them locally as opposed to regionally. And we assumed the responsibility for taking that action upon ourselves. We utilized our strong partnerships with the surrounding counties. And Northern Michigan is, is very fortunate that way. It's not, we, we don't find that all over the state. So it's good to be up here in the north with smaller populations. We have to, we have less resources to work and we are forced to work together for mutual benefit. So that's very important for us. As far as donations, we had a lot of citizens that, that reached out and donated to first responders. Cherry Country Quilters made 170 fabric masks for our first responders to, to wear over their N95s. And as everybody knows, we're, N95s are very hard to come by. And those were just a godsend for us. And another shout out to Northern Latitudes. They have made a, a boatload of hand sanitizer for not only sheriff's office and the courthouse, but also other fire departments and first responders. The fire chiefs got together and decided to formulate COVID EMS units to respond to COVID-19 calls within the county. And within the first week, they have responded to over half of the calls that they, that they handled in the first four weeks combined. So we have seen an uptick in, in the calls for COVID patients, but they are handling them very well. Not all of them need to be transported to Munson. Not all of them turn out to be COVID cases, but they're taking all the precautions necessary. 911 call volume during this outbreak, we're creating about the same number of CADs. So we're, we're creating the same number of complaints that we normally do. Our 911 call volume is slightly above normal, but our administrative calls have seen a climb and that's due to a lot of questions from the public and we've seen a spike last week. As I'm sure that we're all aware. Moving forward, we're going to be monitoring the PPE status of our first responders and the long-term care facilities. I have been included on daily updates from the health department. We have tightened up our communication with them. And just moving forward with that, building a strong partnership with them. We will continue to monitor the, the health of our employees daily to ensure that, that we have a strong and, and healthy workforce. And we'll continue with our communication with chat and other department heads to ensure that our county employees are safe and informed throughout this process. Are there any questions?
I just had one question about, you, you say there's been seven cases in Leona County. How many of those have gone through and are now, you know, I, I wouldn't say cured, but at least have gone through it and now had the four, passed the 14 days and are able to go to work or whatever they have been doing?
To my knowledge, we, we have had just one case that has run that course. So we were as high as eight just a few days ago, but that has dropped to seven. So we have one in recovery.
Thank you. Commissioner Rushton?
Have been hospitalized.
Do you start over?
Now we can, yes.
Okay. How many of those eight have been hospitalized?
We have had, right off the top of my head, I know that we've had one patient that was transported all the way to Munson. We've had four that were canceled and one patient refusal.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Matt, maybe you can help dispel a rumor. And I read about this in the Record Ego. I got a call today and also I've been seeing on Facebook. If someone passes for, passes away for unknown reason, they are not labeled as COVID-19 death, correct?
That is correct. No, there still has to be tests to confirm that.
Yeah, so there is no fact, that rumor that anyone who passes away for unknown reasons is listed as COVID-19?
That's correct. It, it wouldn't automatically be that.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to clear that up. Thank you.
Commissioner Rushton, did you have another question or?
A clarification on that. If a patient tests, if a patient dies, say from a heart attack and tests positive for COVID, is it then a COVID death?
If, if there's COVID present, it would be definitely COVID-related. I'm not sure if they would chalk it up to being COVID is the cause, but it would be COVID-related and it would probably be included in those statistics.
Okay, thank, thank you. So then, then that brings us to emergen- urgency management, the potential renewal of the 911 surcharge. Commissioner Rushton?
I would move to approve staying status quo for the annual SNC-500 collection and remittance report and have 911 director and county clerk complete the required forms and submit them as required.
Support.
Any comments? I, I just have one. I, I do think that we, we need to consider, you know, the, the 42 cents a month on every phone in Leona County that's being charged and it would be something we could do to help the people who aren't working. So I, I will oppose this. All those in favor? Raise your hand. Okay, all those, all those opposed, raise your hand. So the motion passes six to one. I, I'm, I'm sorry, did I interrupt you, Commissioner Rushton? Did you want to make a comment?
Yes, I was just going to say, we use that 42 cents to offset the cost of our 911 at this time. And going forward, if we have other dollars that can be allocated to 911 services, like possibly rent from an additional tower, I would support reducing that 42 cents per phone call in the future.
Thank you. Okay, so then that brings us to the, the tower, the LEC tower request for proposal. Mr. Ansorgi, did you want to address that at all? Just give us a review of what you, what you're doing with it, about the tower?
We have a, a request for proposals that's being reviewed by the county attorney. So our tower consultant has composed that RFP and we have it for review in front of the county attorney right now. We suspect that that's going to be passed along and we can publicize that and then obtain bid from consultants and, and engineers in order to construct this tower. We are hoping that this can still be done by the end of the year and we should be online to do this even with the, the COVID epidemic.
Commissioner Rushton?
I'm assuming we need the motion this week. So I will move to approve the administrator and emergency management director to develop a proposal for construction and placement of a communications tower on the government center property.
Support.
Okay. Any statements or questions? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? Please raise your hand. The motion passes seven zero. Thank you. So then that brings us then to the, the solid waste council and acceptance of the recycling partnership grant agreement. Commissioner Rittenbach?
I move that Board of Commissioners accept the recycling grant award and execute the recycling partnership grant agreement.
Commissioner Sudas Little seconds it. Did you want to speak to it, either one of you? No? Commissioner Rushton?
Last week I had posed some questions to Trudy and Trudy was gracious enough to find the answers to all of my questions. And so I want to publicly thank her for the follow-up. And today I will be supporting this motion.
Any other comments? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, all those opposed, the same sign. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. So then that brings us to the potential approval of notice of intent to amend the solid waste plan. Commissioner Rittenbach?
I move County Board of Commissioners to execute the notice of intent and send it to the state.
Commissioner Lotner, you seconds it? Any other questions or statements? No, all those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the same sign. The motion passes seven zero. Thank you. Then that, then I think that brings us then, do we have to have another motion on the 14-member? Commissioner, Commissioner Rittenbach, did you want to do that, please?
I move to approve the 14-member solid waste council as the solid waste management planning committee for the purposes of amending the plan.
Commissioner Sudas Little seconds that. Any other comments? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please do the same sign. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. So then that brings us to number five and the sheriff's responsibility for executive order enforcement. Commissioner Wessel?
I, I appreciate this still being on the agenda and, and I will tell you that I, I was concerned when I saw the press release. I received so many phone calls and emails. But I want to also say that the sheriff was willing to have a conversation and the sheriff did publish his, his statement on Facebook and I think that did a long, went a long way to resolving the concern. I was disappointed that we made the national news for signing up with four sheriffs, three other sheriffs and, and I thought that the wording of the press release was inappropriate and it didn't recognize chain of command and respect for the law, et cetera, et cetera. But I did, after I met with the, or talked to the sheriff on the phone, I, I sent him a, a message and it was a, it was an serum message and I'd like to read it. It says, "Sheriff, I read all of the messages that you have forwarded on to the clerk and/or administrator. I've also read all of those that the clerk was sent as public comment. As is true for, as is true for so many issues, it seems as if the message you initially wanted to communicate via the joint press release was not the message that many of our residents received. I commend you for the clarification on Facebook and I suggest a short and succinct written release for all those many residents that do not follow Facebook." I think the, the follow-up statement by the sheriff, although I would have liked to see it co-signed by the prosecutor and I would have liked not to see that original press release put out there, but I commend the sheriff for listening to us. And as, as I mentioned to him, I'm hopeful the next time we make the national news, it'll be because we're all working together. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Rushton? You're, I think you're muted. We can't hear you.
This machine does it by itself.
Okay. All right, okay, well, you're on now.
I am on, okay. And I am proud to support Sheriff Mike Borkovich as a constitutional sheriff. I also today received a plethora of phone calls from a lot of individuals, small business owners, especially in Bingham Township. I believe that this sheriff understands that his first responsibility is to protect the citizens in this county. One of the things he protects us from is overreach or usurpation. I can't say that word very well. Usurpation, anyway, beyond that. Of our individual rights. These rights were bestowed on us by our constitution in the preamble under the Bill of Rights. The sheriff took an oath to our state constitution that he swears to uphold these rights for all citizens, no matter their political position. I just want to say that his action assures the citizens that this county will have the sovereignty and the freedoms that were allowed us by our constitution. So I applaud his efforts. His messaging may have not been effective, but as Commissioner Wessel has stated, he has clarified his position to most of the people on Facebook and that's a good point. Commissioner Wessel, not everybody looks at Facebook. So maybe we could support the sheriff in some fashion to get the message out to the people that he really has the best interest of all of us at heart.
Commissioner Sudas Little?
You know, the sheriff has always used judgment in enforcing the law in general. And, and he was using judgment as to how he was enforcing executive orders, which is such a shame. I, I know he was receiving lots of complaints and concerns and requests to investigate from folks who felt that other people weren't following the executive order. And I think his purpose was probably to try to clarify. But fortunately, the press release came out and the way many people interpreted it, what it did was create a lot of chaos and it created, in our business, uncertainty. What about businesses, when they know the rules, they're certain of what they need to do. But when they think someone is saying you can pick and choose which rules you want to follow and which ones, which laws in this case, it's. it shows a lot of uncertainty out there and then the other responses I was getting from the community was one, here. Does that mean people can do what they want? Does that mean I'm no longer protected? It, and it, it means that I've been following the rules and we've all been sacrificing and now, what point was it? So that, those were the kind of statements that I was hearing and I deeply appreciate his effort to clarify and putting it in Facebook and I think it was a really good start and would agree with both Commissioner, with both commissioners, that putting it out as a press release so everyone can see would, would be a tremendous help. The thing that made me saddest is up until this point, we were looking at stories of people helping people, neighbors working with, all the positive things that were coming out of the sacrifices that have been made and the devastation really happening to our businesses. And this shifted that focus, so I'm hopeful that we can get that focus back. And I think that, again, this is not what he had intended. I'm sure this is not what he really, it wasn't really the point of his message, so thank you Sheriff Bishop, if you're listening, for clarifying the statements, I think it's, it's gone a long way to help settle the community.
Commissioner Ansorgi.
I would just like to reiterate that the Board of Commissioners has no control over the sheriff or his statements. He's an elected official in, in his own right and I'd like to move along.
Commissioner Rettenbach.
The original press release was as vague as the sheriff found the governor's executive order and it brought a lot of confusion immediately after it was seen. I had a healthcare worker at the hospital nurse call me, so upset, so uncertain about what it was that was intended with the message. So I, and the sheriff for trying to clarify it on Facebook, but I would like to see a public comment for Enterprise or Record Eagle, you know, with another press release that all people could see, even those that are not.
Any other comments? Commissioner Rushton.
I just want to say that, you know, one of the things that we worry about for some of the citizens in our community is their ability to survive. And when the order came down that seeds for planting a garden could no longer be purchased or that people could not get out on their motorboat to go fishing or people could not hunt for their own food, I had a real concern about that personally. I'm a gardener and when I heard I couldn't buy seeds, I thought, that's great, how do I feed my family next winter? So with that said, going back to the Bill of Rights and allowing people a certain level of sovereignty and freedoms, I think was the sheriff's intent and I applaud him for that.
Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, then we'll move on then to the administration and labor negotiation update.
Yeah, thank you. Let me just start with some comments because whether it's intentional or unintentional, there seems to be an effort by some people to provide false information to the public. And I know it's a stressful time for everyone. I think there's no doubt, I speak for the entire Board of Commissioners, that we have a great deal of respect for all our first responders, the dispatchers, the deputies, everyone associated with this traumatic time. I personally know that, my son-in-law is a first responder in Seattle. He's been very busy the last several months, Seattle's a hotspot. But there's been some rumors and some false information out there. I do feel like I need to clear up some issues because I've got some social media posts. I've actually had three people call me, I've got a couple of letters in the mail and just want to clear a thing off. So there's three rumors, I want to clear up one, and this has been in the media that our deputies were the only group that has not been offered a pay increase. And I don't want to be publicized and I don't want to negotiate in public, but that's not the fact. We have six labor contracts, all six groups were offered the exact same pay increase. Five of the groups chose to agree to contract, one group did not. So they were all for the same amount as everyone else. The other false, completely false rumor out there, and I've been asked about several times, that we have a ton of to reduce the benefits for our law enforcement and that is completely false. We have never made a proposal of any kind that reduces their benefit package. Some people refer it to the Federal Cares Act and yes, we did classify them as hazard, as being critical, which is which virtually every county and every unit of government did. However, we have been very, I think compassionate, as Matt and the sheriff can point out, we've had people in their department who've had illness or had to be quarantined. We gave them the same ten days as everybody else, we're treating everyone the same. We did classify them as critical because A, it's part of the jobs, we cannot have everyone staying home watching the kids, but also there is proposals at the federal and state level to have hazard pay for those people. And the sheriff and I both agreed that we should wait until, see what happens at the federal state level before we talk about it here. So no time did we ever attempt to cut benefits for any employees. Also, there's been rumors that, and I got called this morning about it, that Leland County is one of the few counties that has not offered hazard pay to our first responders and that's completely false. I emailed all commissioners today, I think a four-page document that lists every county in the state and there are only two counties in the state that have right now committed to any type of hazard pay. And so this is public information, whatever you like it, I'd be glad to email them. There's a survey sent out by the Michigan Association of Counties and the majority of counties responded. As I stated, there's only few that at this point at a county level are considering it. And so I just want to put those rumors to bed that we did not offer pay for our employees, for our first responders, that we're trying to reduce benefits and that we're in a few counties that has not offered hazard pay. So I just want to make sure everyone's on the same page. If someone has any comments or thoughts about that, they're welcome to call me, they're welcome to email me and I'll just assume it's based on the stress going on and everyone's struggling on how to proceed. When that happens, you get a lot of false rumors and information about that. So I'll just stop at that. In terms of our contract with the deputies, we, our negotiating committee had a conference call, I believe Friday morning. I have been in dialogue with the union representative from the deputies' union. We have been having cordial dialogue, unfortunately, we're not to a point where we're having an agreement yet. They did reduce the offer from three years to two years, which was part of our original proposal. However, there was a demand for increased personal time as well as additional funds for the reimbursement for materials and for their gun allowance and therefore our internal committee did not feel comfortable going forward and making a recommendation to this board that that contract be approved. And at that point, I'll leave it up to Mr. Bonnick to say anything or Mr. Lotner or Hansorgi. And this, you know, I don't want to get in a public debate here, that's not good for anyone, but I just want to say, I just want to make sure that everyone has the facts out there that we are trying to treat all our groups, all six union groups, fair, equitable and no point did we ever even suggest any cut in benefits.
Yes, and are you looking for whether we accept or?
If there's no motion made, you're just going to continue. If there's a motion to accept the proposal as presented, that'd be one thing, but without a motion. But our committee is recommending, I believe it was three zero.
Yes.
That we not agree with their latest proposal.
So that is the recommendation. Commissioner Lotner, did, did you want to address that or not?
I was just going to state that, that Chuck covered it very well. We've been negotiating, but I was unclear, do you want a motion to go forward or is that unnecessary?
If this is a motion to accept the proposal, there's no need for a motion.
Okay.
I will continue to have dialogue with them, hopefully that we can come to an agreement.
Hopefully.
Did you want to say anything, Commissioner Ansorgi? Or is it, no, okay. So that, that's what, I mean, the little bit that I've been in it, that's, we're just going to continue the negotiations and, and hopefully we can get a better resolution out of this. So that, that would be our, our labor negotiation update. So then that would then bring us to a review of financials.
I have nothing.
Okay, go on, alright. So then that brings us to any committee reports, recommendations or resolutions?
Mr. Chairman, can I just talk about public comments since people may be watching on YouTube?
Yes.
And since we were Zoomed on, we're not going to allow that, but if there is public out there who would like to comment, they can call me on my cell phone and we'll try to hook it up where people can understand it. My cell phone number is 231-633-7680 and let me repeat that, 231-633-7680. If you'd like to call in during public comment, I will put you on the speaker and on the microphone and hopefully everyone can hear it.
So we, that will be how we'll allow public comment at this time. So, I mean, actually, when we get to it in our agenda. So at this time, we're at the committee reports, recommendations or resolutions and I don't see any. So then that would then bring us to any special reports by staff, commissioners or affiliated agencies. Then I don't see any on that, so then that would, I'm sorry, did someone say something I didn't? No? Okay, so that would bring us then to public comment.
Okay, there is a slight delay sometimes YouTube, so let's wait a few.
Okay.
Let's just wait thirty seconds and see if someone does call in.
We're, we're having some difficulty, people are saying that it's not streaming, but I feel it is.
So Laurel just said that it's, it's showing that it is streaming, but people are saying they're having difficulty getting it. So that, you may get comments about it not being able to stream, but we are showing it here as streaming.
Let's do this, if there are people out there that cannot call in, want to comment, if they want to send an email to myself or the clerk, we will pass it on to the full board. The meeting is being taped and will be on our webpage probably tomorrow.
Unless Laurel and I can give it up.
Yes, well, no later than tomorrow.
Alright. It is streaming, yes. So, alright, so seeing no public comments, but you are allowed to email it in at any time and we will try to get that in with the, with the minutes.
I've got some text messages that people said they're watching a thing.
Okay.
So it maybe depends where they are and what type of service.
Alright, Commissioner's comments? Commissioner Wessel. We can't hear you. Commissioner Wessel, is yours muted?
I want to thank Chuck and Laurel and Ron and the clerk's office for quickly accommodating our virtual needs. It's, it's, it's going better than we could have hoped for and thank you very much.
Any other commissioner comments? I just wanted, I just wanted to thank Commissioner Wessel for working with the sheriff. I have talked with him several times about, you know, the, what's, how they're, they're handling the emergency B D from the, from the governor and, and I would have to say, I was, I was, I was concerned about it myself because I felt the sheriff was going out and closing down businesses. That's what I was being told by several businesses and several people called and so I think that might have been talking with him about that, what had him help make that, that public notice. But it just created more problems than it really solved, so I'm just, I thank Commissioner Wessel for talking with him. I talked with Commissioner Wessel before and I, and I, let's hope we have this straightened out because we definitely want, you know, every, all of us are trying to serve the public in the best we can and we certainly don't want to be undermining in causing confusion of what's happening. So I, but, so thank you for, for your efforts. So then that, any other comments? Commissioner Rushton.
Yes, I was hoping that Chuck could give us a brief update on the status of the temperament or the attitude within the county building itself among the workers. How is, how, how is that looking today?
Oh, well, thank you for asking that question. I think under the circumstances, everyone's trying to make the best of the situation. I'll give you some positive stories. Our senior services staff has been swamped, people have been very generous, they have been delivering meals. For the last couple of weeks, they've hit already Leland, Northport, Lake Lenoir and I think today they did Cedar and Maple City. That's all with domated funds, so that's been a positive thing. Dorothy Miller told me they are just almost as busy as they have been on a regular schedule. The reason is people are home more often and I think they're doing a lot more home financing because the interest rates are low. And so she says, it's amazing how busy they are, strictly with documents on home refinancing. Interest rates are below three percent and so they have been very busy. Michelle will tell you the clerk's office has been very busy because the deadline is coming up here for people to file to run for offices. So there's been a lot of calls with that. Everyone's kind of waiting to see what happens May first, you know, everyone's kind of, just to see what's happening. There are no magical answers. I keep telling people, I don't have the answers, the commissioners don't have an answer, no one has an answer. We're all in this together, we're trying to do the best we can, we're trying to be fair to everyone. We're trying to be as positive as we can go forward. Obviously, there's a lot of nervousness out there, which is common when you talk about not knowing what's going to happen in a week, the two weeks, the month, the six months from now. So obviously it's natural, but I think under circumstances, everyone's doing as well as possible. People have been very good about filling out the daily slips coming into the building. I think people are respectful of each other's space. We're encouraging people not to go from office to office and socialize and that has been occurring. So I think overall, under circumstances, there's been some false rumors, which always happens whenever you have these type of situations. But I think overall, I've been trying to communicate with our department heads on a pretty regular basis to see if they have any questions from their staff, but sometimes people are afraid to ask the questions to me and so forth. So I guess we're doing the best we can under the circumstances. The good thing, I know from talking to some of my fellow county administrators, there's some really stressful things going on in other counties with the lack of knowledge. I think the way we handled it last month with the board passing that resolution and the ten days has really helped because we truly have, I think, met everyone's needs. Those people that did come back from travel, those people that did have some health issues, those that may have chronic issues, we have been, I think, fair to them. Even the people who are classified as critical like law enforcement, I know we've had a couple of those people who we had to deal with because of their travel or because of family illnesses and we've been fair. So I'm, I'm pleased to tell you that as of now, not a single member of our staff has been harmed financially by this. And we've been very, I think, flexible and generous. Ron has been great with having people work from home remotely, we have been doing that the best that we can. Not everyone can do that, not every circumstances can. Mr. Bonnick and I have been talking on a pretty regular basis. I think I'm on teleconference calls at least three times a week, either with MAC or the county administrators. I was one today with NACO from the federal level. And I think what's happening here, you hate to compare ourselves to other counties, but I think we were better prepared than some counties and I think the morale here is better than some counties. I know some counties have really been struggling with this situation. Everyone's kind of wondering what's going to happen after May first and I keep saying, we don't know, it's hard to tell. And there's a lot of information out there that changes from day to day, week to week. So I'm telling people, we're just doing it one day at a time, one week at a time. I am calling a special department admitting next week because I think by next week we'll have some guidance from the state level on what's going to happen April thirtieth. I can't imagine we're just going to wake up May first and everything's going to be back to normal. So how can we prepare for that? How can we go forward? How can we go forward? The clerk and I and Jen and John Gallagher have been meeting, looking at our finances to make sure we're on the same page there. We will have a special finance committee meeting. I think it's only second meeting in six years, and that's because of for next week. So I want to get the board prepared for that May 5th meeting. So what's going to happen May 5th? I can't tell you. I had staff people ask me, what's going to happen May 1st, what's going to happen May 5th, what's going to happen at the end of May? And the only thing I can tell them is, I know it's Commissioner's Bonnick's birthday on May 29th. That's a given, but outside of that, I'm not sure if we'll have a birthday cake for him or not. But I think we're all trying to do the best we can to keep everyone calm, to keep people informed, and just do the best we can to serve our residents. As far as I know, I think every phone call, every email in the last month has been answered by people. So I don't think anyone can comment say they didn't get their services responded back in a fair way. There's still people that think we're completely closed. That's not the case. As you know, all our offices are open, we are functioning, just we're close to the public, but we're still going forward as the best that we can.
Commissioner Rushton.
I wanted to say one more thing. I would like to send a shout out to all the citizens in Leland County. I think that most people have used their common sense, they have followed the orders, and we see the results from that. So I just wanted to thank my fellow neighbors for adhering to the rules. One thing I've noticed in the business that I am in is that we're getting a lot of out-of-state people returning back to their homes, and I politely tell them, make them aware, that our governor has put in place a 14-day quarantine for these individuals, and some of them are offended, and I say, well, I'm sorry, it's for your protection and mine. I say it in kindness, but, you know, we all do our little part here and there. But I wanted to thank the majority of our citizens for helping us all keep our elderly, number one, safe, the most vulnerable, and families. So that's it.
Any other commissioner comment? Seeing none, then we will move on to amendments and transfers. Commissioner Laughtner?
I would move to approve amendment number 20-002.
So she did do all four of them. Is that support for that?
Yes, support.
Okay. Commissioner Wessel?
Yes, Tony, did you want...
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Raise your hand. Okay. All those opposed, raise your hand. Motion passes 7-0. Then that brings us to...
I would move to approve fund transfer number 20-003.
Commissioner Rushton, you supported it?
And Sorgi.
And Sorgi? Yes. So both did, so. Okay, all those in favor. Commissioner Rushton, did you want to speak? Go ahead.
I didn't get that.
We can't hear you.
She's unmuted.
It says I'm not muted.
We can hear you. We can hear you now.
Okay. I was asking for Melinda to repeat the number.
The last one was the fund transfer number 20-003.
No, the one after that.
Always be the one before, you mean?
Never mind, go ahead and move forward. I thought we just approved the amendments, is that correct?
Amendments, correct.
Okay, and what are you approving now?
Fund transfers.
And that was the amount that I didn't hear.
So are you all set then, Commissioner Rushton?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes 7-0.
I would move to approve, claims that account, thank you, account $624,537.61.
Okay, Commissioner Ansorgi supports. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Motion passes 7-0. Thank you. And that brings us to post audit.
Yes, I would move to approve, got it, $4,450,333.35.
Commissioner Ansorgi supports, and Commissioner Rushton. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand. The motion passes 7-0. We are adjourned.
Thank you. Thank you.